Called this regular meeting of council to order here at City Hall July 6, 2021 at 7:00 PM. I have one addition to the agenda, new business ordinance 1084-21 and ordinance 1085-21. Are there any other additions to the agenda? We retain a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Citizens comments? Carolyn?
Just wanted to take some time to give you an update on the housing project that we kind of underway in Stafford County. And together something that he could all get in writing. So it's not that anything has really significantly changed. It's probably taken longer to execute this project for two primary reasons. One, getting contractors this year has been really difficult. And two, rising material costs in this year COVID have made it difficult to get those bids in at the price that we put in those grant applications. Because those grant applications were submitted over a year ago. We consider, you know, the time it takes for them to process and review and notify. We have had three grants, three major grants in total that will be feeding into this. So all those cycles and so forth. But we do have a bid now in writing from a contractor that is within $12,000 per house of what we had did, or what we had planned on. And we think that's really good right now. So our thinking has been to do that one, he wants to do one house, kind of validate costs and move on and build the remaining nine. And by way of kind of a refresher, we have, it's slated for there to be three of these houses in St. John, two on the corner of First and Monroe, and one on South Broadway. So again, as it was through, you know, grant process, they come with restrictions, you know, of the programs that the grants, you know, are intended to fund. So of the 10 units that we'll have countywide, half of them will need to be occupied by seniors age 55 and older, and all of them will have some element of income restrictions. So I often say, it's not that they're going to be for everyone, but if they're for three families per town, that's progress. And in the process, we're developing a housing program that hopefully will give us the means to be able to do more unrestricted housing with the proceeds that we get from the rentals over the course of time. Plus, we'll have kind of perfected the design of one house that maybe we can predictably offer that, you know, to replicate if somebody wanted to independently finance and build that. I guess maybe to even back up a step, we're getting pretty close to being finished with the one on Eighth and Broadway. We actually have someone slated to move in in mid-July. So it will be an intern through economic development through the AmeriCorps program that lives there. So there's a couple of reasons that we thought that that might be advantageous to handle it that way, one of which is we'll still have access to the house. We'll still be able to give tours to those kinds of interested parties, whether it's someone like a city council member or people who might be interested in knowing what these houses are like before they submit an application to live in one, you know, in one of the other new builds. So, yeah, I mean, we're very flexible. Anytime anybody's interested in taking a look at that, we're very willing to offer a tour. So coming back to kind of what we're working through, trying to get the bids, make the finance work with the assumptions that we had when we built the grant applications. The federal ARPA money that each town will be getting includes eligibility for water and sewer infrastructure. And, you know, I assume Jamie will be the administrator for the city of St. John. My understanding, doing my own research on this, is that the city of St. John is slated to get a little over $178,000 in the course of two years. And having read through the regs on it, 151 pages, one of the things that I think is worth noting, it says, "Understanding that state, local, and tribal governments have a broad range of water and sewer infrastructure needs." The interim final rule provides that these governments, or provide these governments with wide latitude to identify investments in water and sewer infrastructure that are of highest priority for their own communities, which may include projects on privately owned infrastructure. So one of the ways in which the city could help us kind of close that $12,000 gap is if there would be some willingness to pay for the water and sewer infrastructure hookup to the house, from the city mains to the house. I collected an estimate from Brian Davis, his estimate for the two houses on Monroe, to include the water and the sewer both, would be $3,000, and the one on South Broadway, $2,700. So for a total of $5,700 for the water and sewer hookups for all three houses. So I guess part of my request is just to, you know, ask you to consider that. It's something that could be included in that $178,000.
That would come out of that.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be something that is out of the existing city budget, but from the additional funds that are coming from, or the private stuff.
Counsel?
I don't pay that, because it doesn't look like it's customs.
You're going to have other people coming in wanting to work private, including everybody else?
Well, we're not, we're not, the city isn't giving the money out, correct?
The cleanest way to do it is if you pay the bill directly to the contractor.
There's reporting requirements. I don't know.
Yeah, all I've done, I've got on the portal and put in the information that we've needed. I had everything ready to go as soon as they, as soon as they announced like what cities would need before they even opened the portal. I had everything ready to go, and once that portal was available, I went in and basically you just have to give the information and wait. Because I haven't, I mean, I haven't heard anything else. Billy sends out stuff, but I've done everything so far that we need to do.
My understanding is that you'll get half here in 2021, and then the second half you'll get in May 2022. And you can develop a program, you know, so that it wouldn't be just economic development, so that anybody that builds a new house would be eligible for the same incentive if you felt like that that was something that might help incentivize new housing in town. I don't know, I mean.
Any other thoughts?
You said five, five of these units will be, so the units, the three units that will be built in St. John are those above 55 and older, or have you decided that already?
Among the 10 that we have countywide, we will have to, on an ongoing basis, have five of them occupied by seniors. So it's not any one house that is slated, it's...
Right, you just have to end up with half of them.
Right.
What happens if that isn't met? Like, are they just going to be empty?
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, probably.
The houses will all be the same, it'll just, you'll have to rent out to half of 55 and older.
Right. Which, we had somebody that if we had it built a month ago, we had them occupied. But, I shouldn't say a month ago, maybe two months ago, but whatever. We had somebody that would have set all the criteria. Probably actually looking back over the course of three or four months, I have another person that would have met the criteria, both aging and income wise, but we didn't have them ready to go.
Yeah, there's definitely, I mean, weekly, I'm getting calls about rentals and houses.
So there will be rentals. We get that question, are you going to sell them or whatever? We have a 15-year compliance period in our intent, you know, there are very limited circumstances under which you can sell them. I've been told by the manager at Kansas Housing Resources that they've never seen anyone find a situation. It boils down to you have to be low income enough to qualify, and if you're low income enough to qualify, you're probably not going to be in a good position to be able to get a mortgage to buy it. So it's, maybe with the price point of houses we've, you know, endeavored to get, we might come closer to that being a possibility, but it's unlikely, most likely. So I think the much more likely scenario is that they will be held by economic development for a 15-year period, and at which point we can rent without restrictions or sell them.
Okay. Counsel, any other thoughts, comments, concerns?
The idea is going to put us, it's going to open a jar, I think, but...
In what way?
That other people want their sewer replaced. If it's, the city's actually directly paying for it, I...
Well, this money's coming out of the COVID fund. I mean, we have, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't counsel have last say on how that money is spent? I mean, you may not.
And you guys also talked about the, like, paying the mayor bill out of some of, with some of this, just to remind you.
Right.
That was some of the...
The bids were within $10,000.
I think so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, the, it, the recommendations on how you can use it, I mean, are, I mean, the final say is the way that they've written it in, but, I mean, if we're under what they say, then it doesn't, we can do what we want.
Do you think there's many interested in building new houses right now, citywide?
I've had two calls, possibly. But if that goes...
Okay then.
Okay.
Great.
Can I come back to a future meeting? Would this be on the agenda at a future meeting, or how would, what is the logical conclusion of that?
He said basically $5,000 is basically what it would amount to. You know, I don't think that's too much of a stretch to help out new houses in St. John, but like you said, it could...
If it gets, if it gets rental property going and it gets somebody into the community, you know, I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, basically, don't need a way into that helped out.
Right, right. When you get to that next, the next phase, contact Jamie and then put on the, have it put on the agenda that way, and then whatever information that you have at that time, forward it to her so she can forward it to counsel and they can have a better look and understand.
We're at that point, so if I, if I need to get it on the next county agenda, I mean, or rather, city agenda, I would gladly do that, but I'm needing to revise my, my financial to finalize our grant agreement with KHRC. So, yeah, I'm at the point that it is very helpful to know, one way or the other, what the city's, I don't know, interest would be. So I'm not saying that to like, make, put a pressure like right now. I'm glad to come back to a future council meeting, but I am interested in kind of understanding how you would like to proceed.
Would, when would you come back? Would it be later in this month or next month?
With the next council meeting, that's later this month, right? Yeah.
Do you get, is all this stuff on your list, or, I mean, no city attorneys are even talking about this topic really?
The money?
Yeah, how cities are spending it or anything?
I haven't seen too much. I don't know if people have asked what they're spending it on.
I was just curious. And when did you see the first thing I was...
My understanding is as soon as you get your SAM, I mean, well, in the city of St. John though, is a bit ahead of where a lot of cities are, because you already have your DUNES number and your SAM registration, so you were able to submit.
Yeah, I submitted right away.
So I think it's just a matter of how long it takes them to process it. It sounds like it could be at any time now.
So you get, and I, again, I'm not as far as, oh, you get half the money and then you report by a certain period of time how you spent that money?
Counsel, if it was put on next agenda, do you have a problem with that? No?
So are you planning on, out of the four houses you're going to build, three of them are going to be in St. John?
Yeah, yes.
I mean, they'll be, they'll be in the first four?
This is where I have to dance the, you know, I serve all parts of the county dance, and so it's possible that the first three are going to go in Stafford, since we built one house in St. John already. If I can get two contractors to work at the same time, we'll have projects going on in Stafford and in Hudson at the same time, and then we'd move to St. John.
Does it have it on, I didn't, I didn't have it long enough to read it. Is there...
I'm sorry, I've got copies enough for everybody, I'm sorry.
Is it, like, what's your timeframe, saying you have to start at Stafford? What would be the timeframe if we can, if we're free to come?
Depends on how fast they get them built, I mean. So I understand, there could be some, some perception of like, why do we have to make a choice now if you're not coming to St. John for a few months? And the answer is because I got to finalize the grant agreement before they'll even let us start on House One, and I've got to give them revised numbers before they'll finalize the grant agreement.
My only concern then is, does it say when you have to spend the money? Like, the COVID money had to be spent right away, and I don't know about this one. That might be another issue too.
I think it's in December you have to report. I'll have to double check everything.
You've got a longer period of time to spend it, that's for sure. I think the final amount has to be spent by 2024.
Some of that money that...
I thought it was 2024, but I could be wrong.
That money, because they, they have like a December 31 deadline, and then they kicked it down to about six months.
Yeah.
You'd have time to look at that for next meeting, I guess, though.
I'm not reading 151 regulations. You'll only read 151.
Jamie will.
Okay. I fall asleep, forgets to turn off my clock.
I could probably have it before.
I guess I just have reserves about committing to something that could be two or three years done, but it's due.
Oh, we're not going to be able to draw the grant out that long. I'm already, like, I'm pushing contractors as hard as I can to get them to give me numbers so that we can... We intended to start this building process, like, around January, and here we are. You know, now it's pragmatically August. I'm, they're being flexible because of all the circumstances of the past year, but they're really pushing us to...
What, what has been the holdup then?
We've contacted 18 contractors trying to get bids and...
I mean, a lot of it's helped. She called me for a bid, I mean, I have way too much going on and not enough housing for a price, something that big.
Oh, I guess I misunderstood. They're pushing you to start, or you're pushing them to start?
The grant sources are pushing me to start, and I'm pushing contractors to start. It's both. But I think you're not alone. A lot of people are in the same situation.
I talked to a lot of contractors, everybody's short-handed, and so projects take longer, and I'm booked up six months, you know?
But that's what I'm saying, if they're building four houses, are we going to see this next year, or are we going to see it following?
So the, the contractors that I'm talking to right now, one will stick Bill in Hudson with his own crew, and a part of why I think he feels like he can get it done within the costs that, you know, we're pushing for, is that he self-performs almost all of it. So he has fewer subcontractors to kind of manage. Another one is not a final thing yet, but if he comes through, it will be using prefabricated wall panels, and he does have some experience doing that, and he will be using subcontractors to do a lot of finish work, but he would potentially be doing all three at one time. The exterior framing would probably go together quickly, it would be a matter of how quick the finish work happens.
Like, you don't have even a rough timeframe they gave you, I mean?
If, if you want to get started here, the end of July, beginning of August, he thinks it'll take him about three and a half months, then potentially he's the one that moves on to the St. John project, even if there's still stuff going on in another town. Maybe that's, that's probably best case scenario. So if we say, maybe, maybe November, December, we're pouring foundations.
Counsel, any objections to having Carolyn come back on the, what is it, the 20th? The 20th, the next meeting here in July?
No, it's on.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting, June 15th, 2021.
Submit. Second.
You have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, 0706, 2021, in the amount of $136,803.57.
Move. Second.
Have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. JCI, in the amount of $2,694.
Move. Second.
Have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Stafford County Highway Department, in the amount of $3,917.50.
Tell them to move.
Time to skip them.
Yeah, the Midwest Electric.
Oh, my bad. Anyway, let's go with the Stafford County Highway Department, in the amount of $3,917.50. And we have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Midwest Electric, in the amount of $2,403.28.
So move. Second.
Have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. And last but not least, Mid-American Research Chemical, in the amount of $4,824.55.
Move some. Second.
Have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department head and committee reports. Electric Department, Jeff.
Well, the door's in at the plant, it's finished. Got a call from Mike at Midstates this morning, well, I called him and then he called me back. And it looks like they might have a crew down yet this week, or first part, next week, to, to start prepping to pull the wire in for the generator. We got to pull the old wire out that was in there from the previous engine, and might be some demolition on the concrete, and he's going to come down, we'll work that out, so. The fuel, the fuel day tank for the new engine's sitting on the floor, it got here Friday. I've been kind of in and out, off and on, so, I've been on vacation, so a lot of stuff, you know, the guys have been helping Jason a little bit, we've been working over in an alley behind the Anameneses and going east towards Reston, but we just continue to do that, so that's kind of where we're at. If they need us to out the plant, we'll go down and help, but otherwise, that's probably where we'll be, so.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff? Okay, moving on, Water Department, Jason.
I don't have, can I, oh, I'm sorry. Were we still waiting on, what were we waiting on for that truck lot? Wasn't there one thing that was...
I've got all my stuff.
It all came in, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be a little while probably before we can start it, but I've got, I've got everything, I think, you know? Are we going to raise the dirt up in there and regrade that before we cut it, or?
Yeah, I think we've got some stuff we've got to talk about.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Before we figure out exactly where that stuff's going to go, I've located some, uh, an insurance out irrigation system that I can cut the pipe off of, so we can put risers up for the pedestals, maybe a cement up in to protect them, I can buy it at scrap iron price, and we'll cut them up and use them, some of that, so, anyway. Other than that, we have everything for them, so.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff? Okay, Jason, Water Department.
I don't have much on the water in the sewer.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jason, Underwater Department? Moving on to Street and Park Department.
Well, as you guys see, we're trying to get the roads asphalted, get them milled and asphalted, and it's going pretty good. We had, had a little wet cold spell there, so we had to stop for a little bit. And as far as getting it started back again, we're going to try to do some cutting this week, I hope. One of the guys are on vacation, and he, he's a pretty good loader operator, so I'm kind of iffy on, and so what we decided to do is start working on some street or some storm sewers. I'm troubleshooting a bit there, and then we're going to start back in and maybe doing some of that this week. Because the back truck went down, suction, the suction part of the engine is, wasn't getting no fuel, and I had to trace a bunch of wires, and it looked like it somehow got into that harness, and now I got to replace, take that harness apart and get some wire up for that fuel pump. And I found it, so, get that done first thing in the morning and maybe get that started. And as far as that, that's pretty, pretty much it. We're trying to fill some potholes here and there, as we got some oil, so when the county can't help us there for spraying, we sit there and go break out and get some more potholes done. And the, and the main thing, as I, I wanted to ask on the equipment part of it, it's our old state, our old state truck had a little problem. And it's a linkage, it turns on the, that has a PTO that turns on the, for the bed lift, and it's right in between, it broke off, the pump part of it. I don't know how it happened. They went out to lift it, and it just wouldn't go, it was just flopping around, and I went underneath there, and between the transmission and the frame, there's about that much room, because that pump's right there. So without taking a bunch of stuff off and trying to do it, wasting our time, I was wanting to know if you guys would let me try to get somebody to look at that, because it's going to have to take the exhaust off, take a lot of stuff off to get up in there to get it. And it's got a load, it's got a load of milling exhaust, I can't even get it off. So I just wondered if I could do that.
Yeah, you got it.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind doing it tomorrow, then that'd be great. And the second thing is, our sweeper had a little leak, and it's in a harness of probably 20 something lines going through the frame, going into the frame part of it, then out towards the front. And that one's going to be a burger, and I was wondering if you'd let me call Key Equipment to get that one back up just enough so we can get sweeping this stuff. Sorry for all the bad news, but, hmm?
Hydraulics?
Yeah. It's coming right up by the back tire, and it's coming right up by the frame, in a bundle that big.
About that same time, might be able to double up.
And, uh...
Get it fixed.
Yeah. I didn't know about any of it.
What's that?
Either of these. He said, just get it fixed.
Oh, okay, yeah, this just happened last, last part of the week, so. And then the traffic, or the truck parking got sprayed today, because we're trying to get some odds, little odds and ends done this week, my, one's on vacation, so.
We need to get my list done, if someone bumps into it.
Well, we have the traffic, so we got the truck parking signs up.
Yeah, they're probably the truck parking, get sprayed, not like the truck parking, but the other farm ground, I guess.
You say, did we?
Did it get sprayed, yeah?
No, we just did the truck parking itself.
No, we just did the truck parking itself.
Oh, okay. There's nothing farming, correct?
No, I have, I have actually spoke to someone about that and was going to bring it up under me.
I don't want nobody's doing it no more, huh?
Well, I actually had someone that came and said that he would be willing to, I don't remember what he said, he was going to plant now. Something that didn't take like a lot of like chemicals and stuff. But I don't even know what the acreage is out there that's left. So I mean, if you guys want to set like a price per acre, I could let him know. Or, I mean, he should, I think he would just be doing it for like, I think he has horses, just hay bales, I think. Is it hay? I don't know what that probably said.
Well, if we have to, we could always, we could always mow it.
I just.
Because that, the only, really, the only spray boom we have is about this big. So it takes a while to do something that big.
Oh, I thought you said you had some spray besides the city.
No, 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 no. We just sprayed it with the little guy this morning while the wind was down. Sorry.
Yeah.
No. No, I didn't, yeah. If we need to go and get somebody to spray it, that'd be fine. I thought you just meant the truck parking itself.
Yeah, yeah. I just looked at all the weeds out there on the car and thought we got to do something.
If we paid somebody to spray it, that's a lot, probably at least 10 acres. We're spending money. Why don't we just let somebody? And they don't cost us anything.
I guess Jamie.
Okay. Anything else, Jason?
No other than that, that's it on the streets and equities.
Anybody have any other questions, comments, or concerns for Jason, Underwater Department?
Street and park.
Excuse me, street and park, my bad. Thank you. Okay, moving on, Police Department. We have, I'm moving up the 20-minute executive section to put this right here. This is to include counsel, Jamie, and John. So you want 20 minutes on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to take a motion to approve?
No, you guys can go.
You can go?
Yes, you can go. Okay.
All right.
You have a motion?
Thank y'all.
No, no.
Yeah.
You have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, raise your hand. We will resume at 7:52. Called this meeting, City Council back in order. Chief, we, Council understands that we, that the resignation letter from Sergeant Forrest has been delivered.
Correct.
What are your plans for getting the ads out there? And counsel, what are your thoughts on this?
My, my idea is just that we can get it on the websites for one full-time, two part-time positions at this time. And go. We struggled last time when we opened up for the K-9 position, which is why I ultimately took it and went back on the K-9. We didn't get any applicants that I'd even hired as an officer, let alone K-9. So we're going to have to start from ground zero because there's, there was absolutely nothing in there the last time we, we went. Nothing that I would hire. So I guess I just permission that we can get it out on KPOA, our Facebook, different things like that and just try to flood it. But, you know, it's, it's going to be tough.
Right. Counsel?
Are you going to advertise that as K-9 officer or patrol officer?
I can advertise it as both. The problem with K-9 is, is that once, once you get a dog and you've got that dog trained, and we kind of learned that with Baco, the dog usually, it's a 50/50 shot of whether or not a dog is going to work for somebody else or, or they're not. So I would say we just open it up to an officer's position and go that route. Because really, I mean, we're going to take a, take a slot and then if you hire somebody and they come in as K-9 and then the dog doesn't work for them, then do they end up leaving is, is my only worry.
Thank you.
And, and I'd always seen that, but we really saw that when we got Baco, the first dog. You know, he'd had another handler and, and he just wouldn't take, wouldn't work as well. And he was a good dog. He just, that's the gamble you, that's why you only have one handler. You can't get two people certified on a dog really because it's, it's just not going to, not going to work for somebody. So.
I'm okay with it. Everybody, everyone okay with that?
Okay.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Adams? Okay, moving on. Fire Chief, Chief Sanders.
I don't have anything.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Sanders? You always make it so easy.
I know.
I did have one if we go back.
Sure.
What is the council's thought then for advertising for part-time and full-time pay to put on the website?
What's the, starting for both?
Yeah. Well, we're starting at $16 an hour now for full-time and I think $15 for part-time. I know for us, county's starting them at 19 something an hour. Stafford's, obviously they're paying in part-time, 1850, and then they're, they're paying the full-time around the $20 mark an hour. So I just kind of guess we want to put something in there of, of, you know, pay between or pay. I guess I'm just asking council's thoughts on.
I'd say pay based on experience. That's how I'd put it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. That's it, Jeff?
I like.
Got it. All right. Okay, moving on. City Administrator, Jamie.
Um, how much would you like to let someone farm the rest of the truck parking per acre? I have someone interested.
Didn't we let the last guy do it for free on short notice?
Yeah, I don't care. If it's going to cost us to spray it, let's just let somebody use it.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody's going to take care of it.
I'll take it.
Yeah, a short contract on that last time on studious farming, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just get it taken care of. It's Brian Davis, if anyone cares. He came in last week, I think.
I'm sure he's probably just going to put alfalfa or something on it or feed of some type.
You know, he told, yeah, it's something that doesn't need a lot, he said, but I honestly.
Alfalfa will grow on the thing.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah, it's fine.
I don't care. The less we have to put into it, the better I'll put.
Yeah. And also, I mean, we'll go ahead and, and talk about the budget. You guys completed the budget. They worked it up. Basically, in my report, when I talked about the R and R hearing, they passed Senate Bill 13, which is basically setting your mill levy. And the state is suggesting that most cities hold the R and R hearing because if you don't comply with that mill rate levy, then you will have to issue refunds. Having this hearing makes you be able to present your budget the way that you need it and not have to worry about if you go over.
Your regulation does not.
Right. So, yeah, they've changed everything this year and it's, I don't think fun for anyone that's been having to prepare anything.
Did you get them this little thing you sent me?
No.
Essentially, it does away with the tax then.
Yeah, the tax.
You would have to send it to a judge.
The tax went away.
Yeah. It just does away with it. And basically, if you're going to, the short term of it, if you go over and you don't have this meeting, you're required to pay the citizens back X amount of dollars.
And they're going to see if they like it to continue it or probably go back to the tax.
It'll be something that'll probably work for two or three years and then we'll change it.
So basically, I need to know tonight if you guys are okay with having the hearing because we have to let the county know by the 20th if we are going to have the hearing. And then I can go ahead and actually publish that we're going to have the R and R hearing. And I can send that out as well.
So when would the R and R meeting be?
So my plan is to get the notice to the paper right away. And then we cannot actually have the hearing until it's in between August 20th and September 20th this year. So I can go ahead and, and publish everything. We just have to wait to actually have the hearings.
And I think this year was the only year they, it doesn't really make a difference whether we do it this year or not, correct?
The R and R?
Right. The hearing.
I mean, they suggested having it.
We figured out what, 0.354?
354 or 352 was, was the difference.
The difference of what? I don't know if you guys looked on the last page of our budget deal, but on page 17, our revenue and neutral rate is 70.44. Four, no.
And what we have?
And what we have is 70.798 mils.
So what do you think about 70.44?
Is liable to have to be paid back.
Right. And if you hold the R and R, you can go with your budget.
And no, no extended pulling back.
And not have to worry about.
But we figured it out. It's.
Like $2,100?
Yeah, not even $2,100 is what the difference is.
So what would that, it costs more?
So I mean, you would, you would be writing checks for pennies probably.
Yeah.
I mean, it's ridiculous.
I am suggesting having the hearing because I don't want to worry about refunds. I'm not going to lie. I don't want to do refunds.
Any further opportunity for people to comment? That was good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that. Let's, what a choice.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's smart to do it, whether you need to do it or not. I mean, even if we were below that, I still think just the CYA, do it every year and just get in the habit of doing it every year because the one year you don't do it, it could bite you in the butt.
So maybe just a consensus so we can have it?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Everyone's okay with that? Okay, go ahead.
Is there any kind of format? Do you have to follow for that or you just open it up for comment? I'm just, I'm curious.
So it's basically like a public hearing, like your, our budget is.
Because we can actually do that hearing and our budget hearing the same way.
Correct. We just have to do the R and R for, right, R and R? The R and R first, excuse me, and then the budget here. Like we'd have to open up the hearing for R and R, close it.
And then do the budget.
Open up the budget, close it, and then accept the budget.
Yeah.
So. And I think we will, it'll be our September 7th meeting, I think, is when we will have everything. So, yeah, I think that's it.
Anything else, Jamie? Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jamie?
No.
Okay. All right. So the attorney, John.
I don't have any.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John?
Actually, I was going to ask you a question, John, because I wasn't, I don't think that's here at the last one. So at our budget, and, and you might just think about this, when we done our budget planning deal, would you consider maybe between now and next year, thinking about doing it for like a set price every month?
I could look to see what, a lot of that has to do with case with municipal court.
I, I was just, we were talking about it. I said, you know, it might be something that helps us easier budget, you know, each department's things. Just, just an idea to throw it out there. I mean, you've got a whole year to think about it. I was just.
Okay. I mean, to be honest, I don't, I don't do the billings.
Right.
I look at the billings, so I don't, I'd have to look to see even how they change from month to month, or the change by department.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if we actually ever really got a great idea of what it costs each department. But just so that way, like Alan would kind of have an idea when we go to, you know, his legal advice and when Jamie's and, I mean, the land bank does our deal, but that's just, we just pay it. But just have us a better idea. Maybe we can budget some of that stuff a little easier. I know municipal court, that's kind of just a.
Yeah, I break my billings down by general legal, municipal court, and then we start doing land bank.
Yeah.
But when it.
I really enjoy the new billing system.
When it goes, and that's only been around for less than a year.
Yeah.
But when that, when it gets in the general, I don't know how she then divides it between.
4140?
Between the departments or whether you divide between the departments.
But I think it does some, doesn't it?
I, I mean, I go line by, I can go line by line, but.
Because I'm, I just knew that everybody has a line item for legal stuff.
And like, I know in the, like, the way Ladonna taught me to do it was like 4140 paid for like the meetings and his prepping and, and then like if it says, talk with Jamie, I would take it out of 1011 or if one of you or Mark or, I would always just take it out of 1011. But lately, the way that they have it broke up, I just do 4140 and when that budget runs out, I'll continue with mine. And because really, 4140 and 1011, in my opinion, are kind of the same thing. I mean, it's water and light office. So.
Our bookkeeper was in our 80s and when COVID started, we're tired. And so we had to, we had instituted this new program. And I mean, I can do it, even break it down further. If you tell me, boy, you want me to break it down, I can.
You know, it used to take me a long time to do your bill and now it doesn't. What you're doing is great.
That's all ahead.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any other questions, comments, or concerns for John? Okay, moving on to old business. So what are we doing with the house numbers, Jamie? Everything's still the same?
Yep.
Okay. About sewer report. Same thing?
I talked to Austin today and they have everything lined out. They are, he said about 80% done with like their, like they sent everything off to make sure it's tested and ready to go and, and all of that. So once they get that back, they'll get started. Or I guess it'll get shipped and then we'll be on the schedule to get started.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, property code violations.
I have no updates. I thought they had talked about starting at the end of June, beginning of this month, but.
Did we ever get our bills on the? No kidding.
All right. Unless anybody has any other, anything else they want to say under property code violations, moving on to truck parking?
I put the information in there from the engineer. I also called Rusty because he can go to Rome. And, and my opinion, he should be able to cut the ditch and, and be able to, to do what we need done. He did say we would need to go talk to his board and see if they would be okay with it. Like, I don't know. That's a lot of money in my opinion to move a street or move some water. But I'm also just providing you the information. But I would love to explore different options to be able to make that work more cost effective. And I don't really understand what the engineer even did.
Well, yeah, I was reading this at the bottom. So they're paying the probable cost includes drainage. Well, they're, they're not going to give you much because we haven't hired them to do anything yet.
Yeah. So I, I was confused of why. Yeah.
They, they, I mean, they know what, what needs to be done because they've come up with this pretty hefty. I guess my only thing is, is my suggestion is, and you guys do whatever. I'm not, I know, I know Phil says, well, he doesn't want it to come back on him and that's why he wants his engineers. Well, I'm not paying $80,000 for somebody to come out here and tell us what we already know. And there's not another place in the county that, that the county has done that they've paid an engineer to come in and tell them how to make the water flow. They've dug ditches all over Stafford County. They've brought roads up. They've built them up. They've packed them in. I don't know why this is any different. I don't know why this is any different, other than the liability of he doesn't want somebody bitching about the county did the work and it's not draining right. If it's not draining right, we just go back in and we fix it.
Gravel, right?
Huh?
You can move gravel, can't you?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that, that's the way I look at it.
I've called Stowe's-
So I don't, I don't know if we just need to talk to Phil and say, hey, here's the deal. We don't hold the county responsible for anything. You've got the equipment, you guys can do it. I mean, I've watched them do it north of town. They dug out two ditches and the water flows to the north, to the creek.
I thought we paid E B H, E B H to come in here and tell us that the water will drain to the highway ditch. And it says right here, if the highway ditch is too high above Eighth Street, like, he doesn't even, I, I-
That's why I'm saying, he, he won't tell us, but- He's not gonna tell us till we pay for it.
Whole idea.
Yeah, I, I just think it's comical, I, I-
It's like, wouldn't we, couldn't we have to do that?
We didn't pay, we didn't pay for that.
We didn't pay for anything.
All they are, all, the only thing that is, is they come out and you say, "We have water here, what should we do?" And then they say, "This is what it is", and they call up and they subcontract every single thing out and make their twenty percent off the top, and that's what it is. It's comical, that, that's, that's-
Yeah, this is a joke.
A joke, that's exactly right, it's a joke.
I appreciate calling and, and trying to do that, I just thought it'd be a lot.
Yeah, I just did what you guys asked me to do.
Yeah.
When I got it back, I looked at it and I was like, this doesn't give me any answers.
Right.
So, but, I mean, I did call Rusty, um, just because he has helped us with Ohio Township part of town. And I feel like he's done a good job. I feel like he knows how to renovate it pretty well. But he def, I mean, he said he'd be interested in taking a look at it, but, um, one of us would need to talk to his board.
Well, I just know that that whole road, the ditches need to be moved to the south and to the north. The backside of them ditches need to be on the right of way. That's how I feel about it.
Yeah, close anyway.
Close, a lot closer than they are. Because after the, after we pulled the one ditch up, I don't, I'm not sure you could get two semis past each other if it was a little bit wet, without one going in the ditch. And I think it needs to be that way from two eighty-one to, is it Pearl or Prairie or whatever it is. Ditches on both sides need to be pulled and they need to be winded up. Take our right of way and go.
Maybe we need to sit down with Phil.
Anything else?
That would be-
It's not out of line.
Okay.
You're dead right.
Any more discussion on the, uh, truck parking?
Yep.
They almost won't have to that anyway. We haven't seen it on Township.
Whole thing.
What? What, the whole thing? I don't know.
All right. Okay, what do we got on the engine for power plant?
Okay, updated earlier.
Oh, that's right. I've been here for a while, forgot. Okay, and water contractor, did we talk about that already? Okay.
Still the same.
Still the same, gotcha. Okay. Okay, under new business, we've got ordinance ten eighty-four twenty-one and ordinance ten eighty-five twenty-one.
That's just, uh, you talk in the SGO for the Police Department?
Well, yes, of course.
Yeah.
That's the same thing we do every year?
Yeah.
Update the books after they pass the new criminal laws in July, they go into effect in July.
We have to do them separately, John? Make a motion to pass ordinance ten eighty-four dash twenty-one.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I'm making motion to pass ordinance ten eighty-five twenty, dash twenty-one.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, unless we have anything else to discuss this evening, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I make a motion to amend the agenda for a ten-minute executive session on, uh, non-personal elect?
So include?
Everyone has two.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table for a ten-minute executive session. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. We will resume at, uh, eight thirty-five. Call this meeting back to session. Want to have another, add ten minutes to the executive session with the same people around the table.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor? Motion carries, we will resume at eight thirty-six. Call this meeting back to order. I had asked that we extend the, uh, executive session to include everyone around the table and Sergeant Perez, for a fifteen-minute, uh, executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Call this meeting back to order. Uh, with not having any more business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion. I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.